Welcome to our silent place. Thank you. Please stand and talk in the audience.
I welcome the allegiance to the God of the United States of America and every legal advocate for religious rights, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Nacoby?
Present.
Councilman Verres?
Here.
Councilman Demko?
Here.
Councilman Delosse?
Here.
Councilman Sarsfeld?
Here.
President Katina?
Here.
Mayor DeWesley?
Here.
Over. Thank you. We'll start with Administration and Finance, Councilman Verres. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone that has any comments on what's on your agenda tonight?
You're shouting at someone?
I'm sorry?
You'll be explaining to someone?
Yes.
D on the number one and A.
I'm sorry, what were the numbers?
D on the number one and A.
Okay. What item wants to begin the number seven? Question, sir?
Yeah, it did. In the, uh...
Can you come forward and state your name?
I think it's buddy Cooper. Go on, I didn't reach for it.
Okay.
But in a sentence, you had something about mosque or doing a mosque away.
Yeah, can you come up to the mic?
Want my name again?
No, that's fine. I'm sorry, what was your question?
Reason for your here, I'm here anyway, my wife. About the church, Presbyterian church.
Uh-huh.
You want to convert to rent or lease to a, for a mosque.
Well, that's actually not on the agenda for tonight.
Well, uh...
So if you could hold off on your till general comments, and then you can, then we'll address that concern. I mean, we're taking, we're taking comment on the listed motions right now. So it's not a listed motion right now.
Thank you.
Are there any comments on the listed motions? Seeing that there's no comment on listed motions, motions, Administration and Finance, Councilman Verres?
First motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of June 13th, 2011.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call over, please, chief.
Councilman Nacoby?
Yes.
Councilman Verres?
Yes.
Councilman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Delosse?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion to approve the July bill list and addendum, including the July invoice for GTN law.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call over, please.
Councilman Sarsfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Delosse?
Yes.
Councilman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Verres?
Yes.
Councilman Nacoby?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion to approve the addendum in the employment agreement between the Borough of Carnegie and United Steel.
Count, count. I'll make me scared one. Motion C.
That's what we're gonna do, man?
Well, you have to be, alright. Uh, motion C is, um, motion to award the gasoline diesel contract for the Borough of Carnegie first, um, figure vehicles to Snyder Brothers Incorporated effective August 1st, 2011, and ending on July 31st, 2015. Motion tabled.
Would you like to make a motion to table that?
The second.
Okay. We have a motion at the table. It is the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Just to clarify, there were still some outstanding questions about this contract, so that's why we made a motion to table tonight. Um, Councilman, your agreement, motion, please?
Motion to approve the addendum to the employment agreement between the Borough of Carnegie and United Steel, paper and forestry, rubber manufacturing, energy, Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union, Local 1048, allowing employees the option to decline employment, or employer provided health insurance, and oftenly be provided family dental and vision coverage insurance by the Borough effective May 31st, 2011.
Second, but, uh, the motion?
Every few moments, would you like that?
This, uh, motion is regarding the steelworkers contract. The steelworkers represent administrative employees here in the Borough. And, uh, uh, we have proposed and they have agreed to, uh, allow an employee to decline their health coverage, and in exchange for that, get, uh, family vision and dental coverage, which is actually cheaper for the Borough, and so we, uh, we agreed to that.
Health coverage for the Borough?
Yes, that's correct.
And you drop that, you become a leading one of the Board?
Right, they have, they have vision and dental for themselves, but they could, uh, get it for their family by declining the medical, which is of course the most expensive ones. So they decline one and get, get other. So that's what the purpose of that is.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Code enforcement, Councilman Nacoby?
Thank you, President Katina. My first motion is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2354, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie providing for the regulation of grading and excavation within the Borough of Carnegie.
Second, I believe we need an explanation on this.
Motion has been made and seconded. Carrying for due explanation, please, this motion will raise.
Uh, we have no ordinance currently that regulates that activity, and of course, a lot of it can result in runoff and change of grades that will affect adjacent property. This way, the ordinance will allow, uh, regulation to ensure that, uh, it's done in a manner that, uh, protect, protect adjacent properties, and also not affect, uh, the streets and so forth, uh, for runoff, soil erosion control.
That's meaning that residents have people who have, uh, what?
All excavations.
On site, where you've got someone coming in, uh, tearing up the roof or something like that, putting up a cycle?
That's a different, no, that's a different ordinance. That's, uh, regulated by the street open ordinance.
So, would that be, we're starting now, or would it be for, like, streets that were done last year, last summer? So in the way that, street was paved and the grading that went down?
No, it has nothing to do with streets. It regulates the excavation, grading, backfill on private property.
On private property? That's off the street?
Yes.
One more question. I've seen in other communities where there's lots of second or community's grading on the side of the doors. They, uh, not grading on the streets. Most communities I've seen, uh, worse than that doesn't happen.
This new ordinance, uh, is designed to prevent...
Seeing that there's no other questions, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to advertise ordinance number 2356, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie providing for uniform requirements and prohibitions for the illicit dumping and pollution control for the waterways of the Borough of Carnegie.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, no discussion. Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to advertise ordinance number 2359, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie amending Chapter 5 of the Borough, Carnegie Borough Code of Ordinances, Borough Ordinance Number 2315 pertaining to vacant properties.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion about this item?
Well, when I first, uh, arrived at my seat on council, uh, myself and Mrs. Demko brought to existing council members the, the need to have a vacant property ordinance, because prior to that, one did not exist. Uh, and, you know, I'm in agreement that it is definitely not as strong as, as new it is, but it was a step forward, and this next ordinance, uh, provides some strength and some enforcement to it, and it will help us to, um, further along the cleanup of buildings that have been sitting there for some time, um, you know, it prevents safety hazards to all of our residents.
Thank you. Any more discussion? I just want to thank Councilman Sarsfeld and Councilman Demko for working on the original motion. Um, just like Councilman Sarsfeld said before, there at the time, there was nothing on the books at that point in time, and Councilman Sarsfeld said, "This goes a long way in making our ordinance much tougher, because this council in America feels very strongly about vacant property and making sure that it's up to code." Obviously, we need to do something, because like I said, we're very concerned about that, because there are a number of vacant properties that obviously do have problems that we're aware of. So we're trying to make it much tougher, and trying to bring up the enforcement on these properties. To make Carnegie better, let's work it, buddy. Seeing that the motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve a curb cut on Chestnut Street to accommodate access from Chestnut Street to the new CVS Pharmacy.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, Councilman Demko?
Motion to concur with bid and ordinance to Robinson Pike Cleaning Company by Shea Cog for Project 1 and Project 2 for the joint municipal Shea Cog O and M CCTV inspections and cleaning, year one contract. Carnegie share for these projects is forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, which includes an estimated price of forty-three thousand, seventy-two dollars and forty cents, plus a fifteen percent contingency that may be needed if there is unanticipated CCTV work or cleaning that needs done beyond what is detailed in the contract.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Chief, has there any discussion on this?
This is just ongoing work. Um, you know, we continue to, um, upgrade our infrastructure, our sewer system, um, and we're making progress, you know, we're, we're ahead of schedule on a lot of what we've done, and a lot of this obviously affects, uh, the rate that you pay for your sewage, um, but, you know, it's, it's necessary to do this.
Thank you, Councilman Sarsfeld. Any further discussion?
Just wondering if Kate wants to add anything to that?
Seeing that there's no further discussion, roll call over, please, chief.
Councilman Nacoby?
Yes.
Councilman Verres?
Yes.
Councilman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Delosse?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve pay application request number three from Robinson Pike Cleaning in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty cents for work completed between May 2nd, 2011 through May 5th, 2011, for the, uh, 2010 sanitary sewer landing project as required by the consent order.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion for this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call over, please, chief.
Councilman Sarsfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Delosse?
Yes.
Councilman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Verres?
Yes.
Councilman Nacoby?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. The first motion, motion A, is a motion to adopt resolution number 2011-17, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie creating a handicap parking space near 520 Beachwood Avenue.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion B is motion to adopt resolution 2011-18, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie creating a handicap parking space near 241 Marshall Avenue.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my motions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Community Development, Councilman Delosse?
A motion to re-ratify the approval of a lot consolidation of certain portions of property located at 408 Franklin Avenue front, 408 Franklin Avenue rear, and 815 Charles Street as recommended by the planning commission.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the Phase 2 subdivision and site plan for the proposed Presley Heights development located in the R3 zoning district of Carnegie Borough as recommended by the planning commission. Phase 2 of the development in Carnegie Borough consists of thirty-four townhouses on plans dated June 6th, 2011, prepared by Tri-State Design and Development.
Second. I believe there's, there needs to be a motion.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Do we have second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We table, just so everyone understands, we table this tonight because there's still a question remaining about the outstanding bond, the bonding on this project, so rather than pass this, we're waiting for some more answers to come out, and then we'll pass them to the next meeting, if we get, if all the answers come as satisfactory. Council, Councilman Delosse, would you read the next motion?
Motion to approve resolution, uh, 2011-13, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie authorizing the filing of an application for funding in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars with the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, the purpose of this, uh, grant application is for putting handicapped ramps on Third Street in the area that's going to be redeveloped.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve resolution 2011-14, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie authorizing the filing of an application for funding in the amount of seventy thousand dollars with the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
The purpose for this, uh, grant application, Mr. President, is for demolishing vacant buildings.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve resolution number 2011-15, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie authorizing the filing of an application for funding in the amount of ninety thousand dollars with the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, the purpose of this grant, uh, for ninety thousand dollars is to help pay for the renovation of the Marrow Bridge, uh, which is in New Sears in Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve resolution 2011-16 of the Borough of Carnegie declaring that several dilapidated and vacant structures individually and collectively in the Borough of Carnegie constitute a blighted property as defined by the urban redevelopment law.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, the purpose of this resolution is to give us, uh, the authority, uh, or the basis for demolishing, uh, empty buildings, which we had applied for grant money in, in, uh, paragraph D in previous motion. Uh, this basically, uh, gives us the evidence for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to authorize the Borough of Carnegie to participate in the Congress of Neighboring Communities Connect Program with the City of Pittsburgh.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion about, uh, this item?
Yes, Mr. President, I may.
Yes.
Uh, this group is sponsored by the University of Pittsburgh, and, uh, what this group does is, they, what they look to do is promote collaboration and cooperation between the City of Pittsburgh and thirty-five municipalities that actually are contiguous with the City of Pittsburgh. Uh, this has been around for about two years. Uh, we are not a municipality that is contiguous with the City of Pittsburgh, but, uh, they are, they are allowing two other communities at this time to join this organization. One would be Carnegie, and the other would be Westview. And, uh, if the vote is successful tonight, uh, what we would get out of this is, it's a group that, that shares expertise and looks for funding, and they advocate the urban board. They want to find ways to develop and hands, uh, to better deliver, uh, public services within the urban board, and they want to deliver, deliberate and implement new ways to maximize economic prosperity. So, I, I think with the University of Pittsburgh leading it, and if you're familiar with the Graduate School of Industrial, was it Industrial and Public Administration? International Public Administration? Thanks, Rick. Now, they have a leader out there, David Miller, who's, uh, probably world renowned for his expertise in these areas, so I think it's a good thing for Carnegie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would just like to thank the mayor for doing research on this and doing the labor work and bringing all of this information back to us. Thank you, Mr. President. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Allow have committee reports, Administration and Finance, Councilman Verres?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Code enforcement, children's events, Councilman Nacoby?
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as the children's events go, the next children's event will not be, of course, until Halloween. However, at our annual festival, the Carnegie Children's Events Committee does have a booth. We hope you stop by. We'll have, um, many nice gift baskets and, um, gift certificates and raffle tickets are a dollar, and if anyone's crafty and has anything they can make or wants to donate something for the raffle, we, of course, would be more than happy to have that. The only other thing I want to, um, report on is the ladies. Um, Chief Canucks is not here right now, probably because of the storm. The ladies in the fire department, which I'm thrilled to say I'm an honorary lady of the fire department, they're having a fundraiser. My colleague, Mrs. Demko, during Relay for Life, is always asking for dollars. I'm a lot cheaper. I'm asking for pennies. They're doing a fundraiser called Pennies from Heaven, and the idea is to get a thirty-two ounce, uh, Gatorade bottle and fill it with pennies. We've figured out it kind of holds about fifteen dollars. If you would like to fill your own bottle, you can either buy a bottle of Gatorade, or you can have it at the fire department, and you can drop them off once they're full, or we'll come pick them up. And, uh, as I say, it's pennies from heaven, and when the children get back to school, at the elementary school, they'll be having a competition for their whole room, and the winning room always gets a pizza party, so they get excited about that. But it's just a little fundraiser, just get some extra money for the fire, fire department, and purchase some things we need, help us, and so, I'm collecting pennies if anybody has any extra pennies, so, and, um, that's about it, so, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Councilman Nacoby. Public Works, Councilman Demko?
Public Works.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, mention and congratulate, uh, two of our police officers. Uh, one is long in coming, but, uh, one is Maurice, and I'm gonna congratulate Officer Dennis Warrens, uh, who completed a child car, um, safety seat installment. So when we, uh, conduct Public Safety Day this year, um, he'd be more than happy to be here, and, you know, if he have any difficulty getting the seat into the car, um, he knows exactly what to do there. And then, al- also, last year, Officer Sean Seaman was a certified instructor in, uh, firearms, and he can actually certify other police officers, and this was done through our Council of Government so many times. People say, "What do you really get out of, you know, COG?" It's programs like this, the Chiefs of Police, um, there's seventeen municipalities, and those seventeen chiefs in a, uh, joint effort came up with training that would help us in incidents such as, uh, what happened at LA Fitness, not if any of us want to remember that, but it, it helps because a lot of times waiting for SWAT or waiting for the county to respond, and you're half an hour, hour wait. So our officers that are members of the COG are now receiving this, this training, and they've actually been contacted by other COG organizations, um, to utilize our officers that are certified instructors to bring them up to speed. So it's a really worthwhile, um, effort, and I want to thank all the chiefs, including, um, Chief Warrens, that have been so involved with this and is taking its program to this level. Um, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Community Development, Councilman Delosse?
No report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, because of the storm, Chief Canucks obviously couldn't make it tonight. Or if you had your council person, we could make it tonight. Mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had criminal arrests of fifty-eight, traffic citations also equal fifty-eight. Parking tickets were not fifty-eight, they were a hundred and eighty-two, so there's a change there. Complaints and self-initiated activity by our department this month were eight hundred and thirty-five. Uh, during, we've instituted, uh, foot patrols in certain areas, and, uh, they've been ongoing, so we've had foot patrols in the Beachwood area and also in the Irishtown area. Uh, our police department also provided assistance with the evacuation drill for the Boys and Girls Club, which saved how this last, this past Wednesday, and, uh, that's a safety precaution, and our, uh, police department led them through it. We also have some information as far as for children in the neighborhood and parents. Bikes and scooters seem to be a hot property at this time, so I would recommend that you secure your bikes and scooters. I've, as a parent, have been a victim of, uh, what, two bikes and scooters going off my porch, but that's because my child doesn't always want to listen to me, want to tell him to secure his. Now, and now it's gonna be on national news, and he's in big trouble. But, uh, so, secure your, secure your goods, because that's an ongoing issue, and especially, you know, a young child walking by, a lot of times it's an innocent crime, they see it sitting there, and they just want to grab it. Down at First Avenue, uh, we've been success, successful in the eviction of a, a family in First Avenue under the DCR ordinance, where they had to be taken to court, and, uh, that has been upheld, so that'll be moving forward. Somebody may have read the information about that earlier. Also, I'd like to talk to, uh, everyone about the dedication that some of our officers have. We are currently short an officer, so we're, this is vacation season, and we're really strapped. We're going, they're going round the clock, and they're, uh, some of the individuals are, I think, are a little stressed, but, uh, we even had an officer like Sergeant Kennedy, who has given up his vacation, uh, in order to save the Borough, I would say probably by, you know, anywhere from twenty-five to forty hours of overtime that we'd have to pay, because vacation time, vacation is established at the beginning of the year, and, uh, you know, he was entitled to that. And Sergeant, if everyone who knows Sergeant Kennedy knows that he doesn't even take sick days. He has three young children. They're in baseball season right now, and it, it would've been an ample time for him to take vacation, but because he wanted to save the Borough money for, uh, didn't want them to incur large overtime costs because we're short, he canceled his vacation, he's gonna take it later on. So I thought that was a, um, just something that was, uh, very, very well received on my part, and I, I thank him for that. Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, they're, they are gonna be starting work below the bridge. They had a, a problem with acquiring one piece of property. That problem seems to be settled now. Uh, I just got an email from them today that they want to meet, uh, next week and talk more about the actual plan, so I'll have more details on the plan. Also, when it comes to the, uh, flood area down there on, uh, Lexington Court, that ordinance earlier, that, uh, 2356, about dumping into the, uh, creeks and the streams in the Carnegie area, that's an ordinance that was devised with three communities, uh, in mind, so all three communities passed that ordinance, and then that'll be upheld in Collier, Robinson, and our area. If there's, uh, any dumping into the creek at all, it's gonna be illegal, and, uh, right now, we're just advertising that ordinance, so what an advertisement means is that you, you get the chance to view it. If you have any questions or concerns about it, bring them up to us. And I would imagine, Mr. President, the next meeting would be the time we approve that if it's... If there's no concerns. So the next meeting would be the actual approval of the ordinance if all goes well. Couple... Some good news here. We just did a video for Meals on Wheels volunteer. She is up for Volunteer of the Year. So I'm asking all the individuals in this room, those who like Facebook and those who know people who like Facebook. I know if you don't like Facebook, you have to know someone that does. That they can go on to the website for Meals on... I mean, Facebook pays for Meals on Wheels and vote for the Volunteer of the Year. And we have somebody from Carnegie who's up for that. So if you have a few minutes, go ahead and do that. It'd be really nice to have the Volunteer of the Year from Carnegie. Speaking of volunteers for Meals on Wheels, oh, it's... I'm sorry. It's Mrs. Susan Holzer. Thank you. She also was a teacher at Carnegie Elementary for us for many years. And if you know anyone else who's... Or if anyone here, or if you know of anyone who's interested in volunteering for Meals on Wheels, they're always looking for volunteers. It's a program that doesn't get the recognition that it deserves. It really is what I call a first-level program, and they provide first-level service to many individuals in our community. So if you have the time, even just once a month, or if you know someone who does, you know, please get out and volunteer. Also, I want to thank the Boys and Girls Club. It's been a tough year economically for a lot of individuals in and around Carnegie. And they have given out more scholarships here this year than they ever have in the past. And they just gave out another four or five scholarships, even though they were already completely booked. They found four or five more scholarships to give out to individuals who were needing. And it's just organizations like that to keep our community moving forward, so I really thank them. So the next time, there she a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club. And especially if it says it's for scholarships, please donate, because it really is for scholarships. And I see Maggie in the back room. I want to thank Maggie, who came to the Standard Ceramics opening the other night. It was... They have a gallery exhibit, and they have this about once every six weeks. This week was... This time it was the Baltimore Artist. And he really puts up a nice exhibit. And they have music there, they have hors d'oeuvres, and it's just really a nice evening. And these things will be on exhibit at Standard Ceramics. They'll be on sale and on exhibit at Standard Ceramics throughout the month. So if you're interested in some fine ceramic works, please stop down. They'd be more than happy. And also, with Standard Ceramics, talk about a great community individual, this Graham Turnbull is. He donated a bench for our community. And if you... Right... If you go to the corner, right there at Washington and East Main Street, right in front of Moretti's, you'll see a brand-new bench there. That bench was donated by Graham Turnbull and Standard Ceramics. And he did that because there originally was a ceramic piece out in front of that store. That ceramic piece was in disarray and was actually disintegrating. So what he did is he took what he could back to his warehouse, I guess you could say, and they're working on it and restoring it. But he wanted to make sure there was a bench there replaced, because even though the ceramic pieces are a work of art, a lot of people were sitting on them and using it as a bench. Lastly, one thing I did want to mention, and we've all heard this recently, is that we've heard that Roslin Farms has petitioned the common police court to remove themselves from our school district. And I've heard a lot of concerns from residents on what that would do. Well, first of all, from the information that I've received, it's not a process that will happen relatively quickly. The process will take quite a while if it does happen at all. Second of all, there's... It's fairly safe to say that our school district, while we don't have... We're not as big as CV. Many of our programs are comparable to CV, and we put a terrible education out there, which will make it a little more difficult. But the last thing I want to say is that tax-wise, there... On real estate taxes alone, not counting the other taxes that we pay for school district, on real estate taxes alone, Roslin Farms accounts for about eight percent of the total real estate taxes taken in for the school district. So while Roslin Farms is a very nice borough and we would love for them to stay, on a personal note, I would like to send out the invitation to the Roslin Farms people to continue to stay with the school district. But if they can't, I just want to let you know that it accounts for about eight percent. So down the road, it's about a million dollars of real estate taxes. And there's other additional taxes too, but that's out of about thirteen million total real estate taxes. That's all I have right now, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point in time, we'll take general public comment. Sir, we'll begin with you, because you don't need to come back. I believe you asked a question tonight when you were going to vote on something for the Islamic Center. And actually, that's not correct. We actually did vote on it last month, the last month's meeting. Did you have another question?
No. I'm Tony's wife. In the signal...
Yeah, I need you to... Yeah, so... If you have anything for my voice.
My name's Laura Cookham. In the signal item, not this past Thursday, when they tried, there was an article in it about the Islamic Center that was going in where Rosario's used to be, but which has been vacant for a couple of years. And they did say that you voted, Carol being the one to sending vote. And... But they did... It also mentioned in the article that the people that were going to take over the building would be here for questions and answers, and that the council would be fielding questions. And that's one of the reasons, you know, which isn't a good excuse. My husband and I should be here every month anyway, but, you know, sometimes it takes something like that, like, get you going. So that's why we came tonight. So...
What questions? There is a representative from the Islamic Center here, and whatever questions we can answer were worthy of...
Okay. I guess we thought there was going to be more information about it. You know, like, I thought it was interesting that there were other things that came up tonight, and there's still questions or whatever. And so you tabled them until you got maybe all the appropriate information. And I know that according to this article, it was advertised in the Tribune Review. They'll get the Tribune Review. So we didn't know. So we were kind of surprised by it. And I guess not having enough information is always a dangerous thing, because you can react to things that you don't understand. And so we would just like a little more understanding as to what the purpose of this is. It's not what... You know, is it perceived as being a church, a place of worship? Or is it a center for them to... If they have community activities or whatever, is it that type of building? And just, there was a blurb in the article that mentioned that they're anticipating that it could result in more Muslims moving into Carnegie, and, you know, how is that going to impact everything? And just the situation itself. I mean, I'm sure everyone can understand it's a sensitive thing, and like I said, sometimes ignorance is worse than not having the information. And that's why we're here. We just want to understand what it's all about, what we can expect, how it's going to impact our neighborhood and our churches, and is there going to be an impact? And we're just concerned.
Well, to begin with, I'll let... Obviously, Councilman Sarsfield, Councilman Delos, and Councilman Vares have met with them after we have a hearing, so I'll let them address some of your questions. But last month, what we did was, our planning... This went before a planning commission. Our planning commission recommended a conditional use application. Do you want to explain what conditional use is? Yes, if you could, please.
Yeah. What happened is, yeah, it was an application from the AIC. They came and they expressed interest in purchasing a Presbyterian church in that zoning district. Obviously, that had been a church at some point in the past. In that zoning district, it's a C2, it's what's called a C2, which means a commercial type of zoning district. A conditional use in that particular zoning district has been for years a church. Now, what a conditional... Now, there's two types of uses available in a zoning district. One is the usual, normal one. But then there's the second called conditional uses, where you can, if you meet certain conditions, be permitted to carry on that particular business or residence or whatever type of building in that zoning district. This has been for years a zoning, a conditional use church. The AIC came and filed an application to me. Council referred... Borough ordinance and state law refer to Borough Planning Commission. Borough Planning Commission held a hearing on May seventeenth. And that was a public hearing. Anybody could have come to it. It was advertised... It was advertised per requirements, per... I mean, it met the minimum state requirements. Based on that, they made a recommendation for our council. On June thirteenth last month, well, June thirteenth, it's kind of redundant. On June thirteenth, council held this body, held a second advertised hearing. Now, I appreciate that when a conditional use application in the borough ordinances, there are twenty-two criteria. Some of them are applicable to this particular situation. Most of them are, some of them are not. The person who makes the application, the party who makes the application, has the burden of showing that they meet all of these conditions. And if they meet all of those conditions, then they're entitled to the conditional use approved. Also, under the state law, when the planning commission held a hearing on May seventeenth, this board had forty-five days to ratify that recommendation. On the forty-sixth day, if this board took no action, it would have been revoked. So this board scheduled the hearing on June thirteenth. Clearly, within forty-five days. And scheduled a four-vote after the hearing. It is regular meeting, this meeting last month. The hearing was advertised, per requirements, perhaps where the MP said, municipal planning judge. It was advertised twice, once within... Once not more than sixty days before hearings, and once not less than seven days before hearing. And the paper record for Borough planning, Tribune Review. That's been the paper record since the beginning for the last five years, that I know of.
And why is that a paper record?
Well, it's a newspaper of general circulation, meaning it's a daily newspaper that charges for the paper. And the reason why, actually, council chooses the Tribune Review, quite frankly, is it priceless. They have a thousand Tribune papers, then a dozen Post Gazette. The Post Gazette would be the other alternative. The hearing was held. Representatives of the AIC came. Council found that they met the conditions set forth in the borough ordinances to use that as a church. And approved.
And that's why the AIC is now granted a conditional use.
Not to interrupt you, Jim. Anybody got cell phones? If you could please put them on silent, return them off. It's not good while we're up there talking and we have cell phones. Put them off. Thank you.
And had number one, when they met the twenty-two, or the permit of these twenty-two conditions, they, you know, well, the borough could have been sued if I not approved. But also, had council not acted, there would have been on forty-six days, the forty-six day from May seventh, which would have been much like that. It would have been deemed approved anyways. And I can imagine the outcry if council wouldn't have acted at all. So that's how we get to where we are right now.
And I would just like to comment that, you know, I appreciate Councilwoman Koby's vote on no on the issue. You know, when we feel strongly about something, we have to have conviction. My... I guess my only issue with that was the win cry at our workshop meeting. They had multiple representatives from the Islamic Center there, and not one question was posed to them on behalf of Councilwoman Koby. If there were outstanding questions and we didn't have enough knowledge, I don't know why none of those questions were addressed.
Councilman Sarsfield, let me interrupt you and tell you, please do not speak for me, number one. After that meeting, I went home and did my research. And I did not vote, if you recall, against the center. I want everyone to know, I am not against freedom of religion. This is America. You can worship who you want, you can vote the way you want, you can do anything the way you want. This is the land of the free because of the brave. All right? However, I went home and did my due diligence and researched articles, did I not, from the papers? And so please do not speak for me. I voted to table it, not to vote against it, number one. And number two, I had no questions that evening because I did not know enough about it. That's why I did my research. Thank you.
Well, as I said, I mean, everybody comes up and says... You know, I just wanted to be clear that at that meeting, no questions were posed. We have met myself, Mr. Delos, Mr. Vares. And it is my personal, indeed, feeling, the people going to operate this has not... Nothing but the best interest of our community heart. They're willing to take a four-block area in any direction to help beautify it, keep it beautiful, work with our community. Yes. May we see more Muslims moving to Carnegie? Absolutely. They'll be closer to their worship site. There are Muslims that serve in our United States military that sacrificed their lives just as our brave enemy. Okay? This is the United States of America. There were times when Catholics were oppressed, there were times when Presbyterians were oppressed. We can allow oppressed people. We have to accept that everybody has a right to worship in the United States of America.
Is there a question?
My name's Stephen Parker from Rowan Avenue. And I belong to a church that's been persecuted in this country, the Mormons. When I joined the church, I read a book about history, and I was quite proud that basically they moved from New York to Cleveland, to Illinois. And the governor of Missouri had an extermination decree that was perfectly legal to kill Mormons. And the reason wasn't related to me. It wasn't that it was a different group, it was politics. All these Mormons coming into the area, if they weren't whatever everybody else was, then everybody else had to worry about people being a different thing. Now, I don't care about any church coming here. Now, I know from the past, there was a borough councilman that I knew since first grade to twelfth grade, who made the comment that nobody reads the Tribune Review. I get the Tribune Review. I have no clue where your advertisements are. And I don't know if anybody else in the audience knows where these advertisements are. Just because you do something legal and you advertise it in the Tribune Review doesn't give you the right to say nothing in a signal item, the radio, or anything, any other way to communicate to the community. I mean, okay, fine, legally, you advertise these meetings. But I think that you had an obligation beyond legal to let the public know. I mean, if no one shows up, it's sort of like, I'd figure that nobody knew about it.
Now, I understand, every action that we take, the same steps have to be followed. We can't... We can't take one particular issue and treat it any differently than the other. Whether it's, it's a public hearing or putting it on a stop sign, no matter what it is. Every issue, because everybody's, has to be treated fairly and equally. So that's, that is our, our current practice, to advertise in that paper and to follow those procedures. If we do anything out of that scope, we again could be open to liability.
Can you change your procedures and did you do more than just advertise legally?
Well, sir, the suggestion was made last month, and it was a good suggestion, that we put our legal notices on our website, and that's happened. Our legal notices are on our website. We're taking every possible step in order to try to be as open and honest as possible because we have nothing to hide, there's nothing wrong with this. If there was a conditional use application, it took, it went before every step. It went to the planning commission, planning commission discussed it. We advertised it, we had a hearing, we tried to do, I, I believe the mayor went around and posted and, and walked door to door and tried to get that about this.
Well, perhaps not the hearing notices to everybody on East Main Street, so they would have...
Mr. Vera, on the issue of the putting things also in the signal item, there is some amount of expense involved in that. I don't know how much, how much we spend each year in the trip. You, is anybody know what the, the actual beginning amount is of this amount of charge?
Signal item, that's a shame.
The signal item doesn't meet.
Signal item's not legal for us.
Yes, the signal item is probably expired, it's banned review.
I unders, I understand, we, but there's a, there would double our advertising cost, basically, is what we're saying. And that's a tax issue.
The signal item's great, right?
Not, not for us to put stuff in, no.
But, but, but the signal item does not meet the standard for the public notice. So, so now my state law.
Well, if I'm reading the paper, there's a concern now that if the legal, um, contacts for the people are on the internet, that you're gonna be able, the municipalities will be able to hide them more so, so that the people won't even know from the website.
Sir, we have, we have nothing to hide, we did that in order to try to be...
All I know is the Tribune Review itself has said that people are concerned if, if the townships, et cetera, can do this on their own websites. I'm just quoting the Tribune Review.
I, I can't tell you what the article reads, but putting the, the legal notices on the borough website does not meet the legal, legal criteria for the notice. It has to be in a newspaper of general circulation, which in Borough Plan is either Pittsburgh Post-Des or the Pittsburgh Tribune Review, okay? The fact that the borough is now putting these legal notices on its website, and this is purely a suggestion at the last meeting, does not mean that they will stop being in a newspaper of general circulation, which right now, for this body, is the Tribune Review.
Well, what's the legality of putting it on the website? If you can't put it in the signal.
That's a step above, that, no, it's, it's, it's an extra step. To put it on the signal items would cost money, where putting it on the website does.
Excuse me, may I, Mr. President, this is absurd. This is, one thing I do want to say is that I, you know, I truly believe the reason for this board not using the signal item is because it doesn't meet the legal requirements. And, and it is cost, and the cost that it incurs. But with that being said, I would, like us as a board, to get down, because this is, to sit down together and discuss what type of possibilities that we can have going future, forward in the future, because, well, this gentleman has brought this up, this is probably at least a fifth or sixth time someone has brought this up this year. And maybe there's a compromise we can figure out, maybe for all public hearings, we can have them also listed in the signal item. And for the regular meetings that we advertise at the beginning of the year, we just list them in the Tribune Review because most people know where they are anyway. Just for a, you know, just for special meetings that are public hearings, something that, it would be, we would incur a cost on it, but it may be something where the public is, seems to be asking for, that we can meet their needs and also reduce our cost to, from the full effect. So it's just one thought, I'm not saying that is the answer, but maybe we could sit down as a body and brainstorm on this and come up with an answer that would work for everybody. Does that sound like a solution that would be applicable to you, sir?
I just think that the people don't know that they have to look on the website or they have to look at the Tribune Review. If, uh, the people have to go to the Tribune Review and they don't get it at home, what are they supposed to do? Are they supposed to go to the library?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Once or twice a week to check the Tribune Review for its advertising, or still wear it?
Sir, we also have a workshop meeting that occurs the first Monday of every month. And typically, all of our business, we discuss all of our business. So you're more than, that's an open meeting, that you're more than welcome to attend. It begins at six PM and it's held back in the conference room. That's another meeting, that's another opportunity for you to come. I know some of the residents here tonight also come to that meeting as well. Those are the meetings where the majority of the business is discussed, those are the meetings that last four, five, six hours.
My understanding was, is that your meeting, your business meetings were open to the public, but the public couldn't speak.
That's, if you, if you ask the chair, if you ask me to put on the agenda, yes, you can speak.
You just have to be on the agenda.
You just have to be on the agenda.
Because I noticed, I walked in here late and there was no list to be on the agenda.
No, in our regular meetings, you don't have, I'm talking in our workshop meetings. In our workshop meetings, if you wanna be on the agenda, you just call the chief and ask him to put you on the agenda and you'd like to, you'd wanna discuss X topic. So you can always, that opportunity's always available to you.
Mr. President, could I add something? I spent four years on the school board. We televised every meeting for everybody in this borough to watch the school board meetings once a month that we had up there, the voting meeting. It was on TV every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. I've been on this board now for a year and a half, close to two years. We've only been on TV one time, we televised one meeting. We keep on bringing it up, that we should be on TV, but because we don't have the right equipment or the format has changed or whatever, we're not doing that for the public. And I've brought up numerous times, and I say, right now, we should, for the next meeting, have that camera working, have somebody running it and put it on TV. That's your answer.
I don't mind this to bring up, I brought it up a lot, to check and see if it was gonna be on TV. It had to go through this board, this board, this board, has anything changed in a month?
There, 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 there's a, there's a way to follow, I mean, we can't have people holler from the audience. And I, I mean, huge respect, it turns out, this is...
Sir.
But, but then again, you have to advertise what these meetings are. So we know, because I know that there's a station that has those things on all the time, but I don't know specifically what our meetings are.
Do you watch TV?
I watch TV and I've watched those meetings, but I have no clue when, if Carnegie was broadcasting, what it would be.
Well, once we would do it, they broadcast it at least three days a week. Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays.
But once again, you know, it's like the public's in the dark, because they don't know to check the Tribune Review. And they don't know the TV schedule for the meetings if they even have them. And you sit there and say, we're doing everything legal and we're sitting there thinking, we don't know what's going on because we don't have, we don't know how to access anything.
Sir, do you have a computer?
What I'm saying, what is it? How many people in here know how to get to the website for the town? How to get to the Tribune Review to find the advertising? Raise your hand.
That's the majority of the audience, sir.
I don't think, that, alright, that's not about the majority, lady. Cut you off. I mean...
Sir, do you have any other questions? Not to cut you off, but we keep going around in a circle at this point. We're trying to put everything out, the suggestion was made to use the borough website as another means to reach the public, we did that. Councilman Vera suggested that we record our meetings. The camera's on, it's being recorded right now. You can also go on our website and basically watch our, watch our website, watch our meetings. We try to do everything we can. We entered an agreement with the school district to try to get our meetings broadcast through Verizon and Comcast. If you remember, if everyone remembers correctly, they were only on one channel or the other, they were never on Verizon, I think, they were always on Comcast. We entered an agreement with the school district to try to get on both channels, Verizon and Comcast. But the problem is that all three municipalities, Crafton, Roslin Farms, and Carnegie, are trying to do this together with the school district because we wanna share one tech channel or one computer access channel. That's supposed to be happening in the fall, so the community meetings will be on TV. For right now, they're on the website and you can click on them and basically watch whatever you want. All the meetings, I believe, April, May, and June are all on here, chief, at this point, correct?
Yes, April, May.
April and May, and June will should be on there shortly.
And Steve, you put at least one on YouTube, right?
That's how you watch.
That's how you, they're all, you just click on the link and you can watch the entire meeting.
To reiterate, the workshop meetings are always the first Monday of the month, at six o'clock. And the second meeting is always the second Monday.
And we always advertise all of our meetings for the entire year, January, we're in the Tribune Review. For the entire year, so you have all of the dates. And we discussed that at the first borough, obviously, the first January meeting, we put all of the dates out there as well.
Wait, before darling starts, this gentleman is standing, did you have something to say, sir?
I have a question for Mr. Sir. Mentioned that a Muslim was gonna go up there any time. Before he got into the military, he was gonna be checked, FBI, O'Malley. I spent ten years in Rico, man happens. These, they've already approved these people to come in here, were they ever checked?
Sir, we can't, we can't conduct background checks, that's, that's unconstitutional.
The hell it isn't.
I, I go to, I go to the Methodist church, should, should we have background checks on all my fellow parishioners at the Methodist church? Or should we do background checks in everybody who's at the Baptist church? We can't, we can't.
For every meeting's been going on because of the Muslims. And, and there's a lot of good Muslims, don't get me wrong. But there should be some way of finding out what these people are about. If they're good, that's fine, I got no problem with it.
And we've done that.
You didn't check?